I'm glad you called the meeting board. First item is to review the agenda, revise if necessary. Approval heads from last, so it's been two months ago. Emotionally approved? Second, discussion? All in favor? Onto public comment. Oh, Jim Tate's not here. Next is public comments. We have some folks here tonight. We just ask that you keep it to the point of our current discussion, which is the noise ordinance, and try to keep it for four minutes or less if possible.
Everybody sign up if you want to speak. First we've got Mr. Lou Vitale.
Thank you. Lou Vitale is the name. I'm here representing Macon Airplane Club. We are a nationally organized, recognized club. We're certified by the AMA, which is the Academy of Nautical Paranautics. The academy's been in business for 75 years. Our club's been in existence for over 20 years. We currently fly over at the field in Otto. It's an area about 50, 60 acres. We've been there for over 10 years. To be a certified club means that everybody's got to be a member of the national organization, which means that once you sign up with the AMA, they have provided you with insurance because these things can get out of control occasionally. So we all have a certain amount of insurance and we all have to be certified, and safety is the primary concern. So everybody who is part of our organization, both on the state, on the federal, and on the local level, has to be qualified to fly and has to obey quite an extensive set of rules and regulations about what you can fly, how far you can fly, et cetera. So we're quite serious about our safety rules. Right about now, the club is about half electric and half gas. Why is that important? Well, you can hardly hear an electric airplane. A gas airplane you can hear. So we have a number of fairly large gas airplanes which we fly mostly on the weekends. I can say in the last 10 years, one hasn't flown during the week, but it's a rare event. Obviously, we only fly during the day. It's pretty tough to fly these planes at night. We have flown a little tiny foaming at night, but I don't think anybody here is worried about a little foaming airplane. But the big gas planes do fly mostly on the weekends, and especially on Sunday. They never fly at 12:00. They want to make sure that in case there's any noise at all, if there's nobody who might even charge at that time would be concerned. So we're very concerned about our neighbors. In the last 10 years, we've had virtually no problems with any of our neighbors out in Otto. There was one major exception. Some of you who were part of the 911 organization might know who that was. But she's no longer an issue. But other than that one problem, we have been, we have had excellent relationships with all of our neighbors. We have three major events a year. In fact, we've got one coming up in about two weeks where we have a weekend flying, and that means that the Saturday morning we start out, usually put the big gas airplanes in the air at 12:00, the afternoon, fly them in the afternoon, and sometimes fly them on Sunday. A noise ordinance by its very nature could directly affect our club. We've had no problems in the past, and nationally speaking, most clubs have had very little problem with noise ordinances. It really depends on how the ordinance is framed, and it depends on when it's supposed to be enforced. As a landlord on a personal basis, I have 22 apartments. I am very familiar with the issue of noise. I get calls all the time. So I understand somebody playing loud music at 10:00 at night, and there's a little thin wall between the apartments. That's a problem. So I understand how that probably is an issue that needs to be addressed in some way. But when you're flying out in the middle of the 60-acre field with a big gas airplane, which probably makes no more noise than a loud chainsaw, or certainly no more noise than a truck going by at 4:41, we are concerned. So we do ask that you keep in mind that anything that you do here needs to be in a manner that doesn't interfere with reasonable recreational activities and logging and trucking and all of those things that happen out in the middle of a field. We're a country organization. I understand there's some areas in town that we have a lot of business property and a lot of residential units close together. That's a completely different situation that we have. But the problem is it's all county. So when you frame your ordinance, you need to have to distinguish between people who are doing things out in 60-acre fields and making a certain amount of noise as opposed to somebody who's 20 feet from somebody else playing a loud radio. And keep in mind that the critical difference is day and night. I can't imagine how you could enforce a noise ordinance during the day in county because all you're doing is giving them license to somebody to harass somebody else. So on behalf of the local airplane club, Macon Airplane Club, I'm asking you to be real careful on how you provide or implement, prepare this ordinance, and just keep in mind that you live in county. Question? I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Since this came up, I'll talk to three or four of your members. Can you explain a little bit on complying with the charity patch that Monday raised?
Oh, well, we have, we have three major events a year. In fact, we've got, I happen to have flyers for our flying coming up the next couple of weeks. I could be here right here. On the 27th, 28th, which is a kiss a week and a half, we're having a Macon airshow at the Otto Field. We're having barbecue, and it's a great time. Basically, children we really love. We have cooperated with the Boy Scouts on a number of occasions, Cub Scouts also on a number of occasions. We have, in our charity flying, which we usually do one a year, we have assisted many of the local charities. I think this is our sixth annual charity flying. So we are very much involved with the community. Right now, we have an extensive booth over at County Fair and by Greg Doster, my president. So we're very much involved with the community. We understand the public relations are important, and we want to make sure that everyone knows that we have a great hobby. We love to fly. And we are very much part of the community, and even in every chance we get. I don't know if that answers your question.
Let's have a little head phone.
Couple of questions. The complaints that you were saying you owe us here, can you please be more specific about what the nature of the complaint?
Question.
Second, so short question. Do you, at local or national level, have any part of this in regards to a noise ordinance that you would be concerned with?
A noise level requirement is a very problematic situation when you're dealing with a model airplane. You can have a small gas engine which makes a lot of noise. You can have a great big gas engine. You have certain restrictions on the decibel level, which is a decibel level. It's very difficult to enforce because basically the airplane is here now and it's over there then. So what's the test? Is the test when it's sitting there, ready to take off? Is the test when it's 500 feet away?
Could it be at the property boundary?
The property boundary is, well, when the airplane's 500 feet, well, you can't go 500 feet. 400 feet's the F.A. Well, we're below. Sometimes it happens. Most of the time, we're below that. It's very difficult to say what the property line is. And if you had a, a lot of these are GPS controlled now, so a lot of guys, especially fly quadcopters, they have GPS controls, and they can set waypoints, and they can fly within those waypoints. But basically, because we have such a large area that we fly in, we have a couple of big pastures on each side of us, but we do have a small trail park directly behind us. So where the property line exactly is, no one's quite sure, especially out there in the fields. And like I said, with an airplane in the air, it's difficult to tell. The one issue we had with the one lady who lived, she had to live almost a mile away from us. She had a certain reputation. I don't remember her name, thank goodness. But she had a reputation for complaining about everything. I think she eventually had a restraining order placed on her if she made any more 911 calls because she called 911 virtually all the time about everything. Turkeys crossing her property, trucks driving down the highways, one of our airplanes in the air. So other than that one complaint, for the last 10 years, we've had no actual complaints in any of our neighbors. What would that answer?
You said that you've been organized in Macon County for over 20 years?
Yeah.
And you think your current location for 10, at least, where were y'all at before?
We were out at the industrial park for a while, and I think we're up at the antenna farm with the radio stations. Land, land, so we've been in three locations.
So you keep them further and further away from town?
You know, it works. It works. We've got a couple of huge cow pastures. The cows don't seem to mind, and when we have to go out there to get an airplane, as long as it's on bulls, you know, we don't have a problem with that.
Y'all purchased that property?
The property that we actually fly off, it is owned by Paul Wilson. But we have an agreement with the, with the field next to us, I think, Mr. Say, or Jester. See? We have an agreement with him not to support, not to support this field, and when he's gotten here, we don't fly airplanes on our fields. We've been getting along real well.
Thanks. Any other questions? Thank you.
Are there any swatters here?
Next up, we've got Donna Jarris.
Good afternoon. I've been on the bed sleep all week. My voice is up there. I just came from court. They literally arrested somebody this close to me in handcuffs and took him out. I'm like, oh shit, it's been one of them days. Somebody on the phone about being in a court. I don't know who it was. Yeah, they don't phone us again. Okay. I live off of San Van Hook in Quack Chapel. It's a little subdivision with 16 mobile homes. I have a major problem with my neighbor, Major. Or just can't explain how that misses. The man rides ATVs 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 o'clock in the morning. He will go outside and he will rev his engines just to wake us up. My daughter and my husband care more than I do because I take a lot of medication. Obviously, that's not enough. So we're always awake. I can't tell you how many times, I'm going to get the reputation about the 911 pretty soon because I have called them, and unfortunately, they come out there, they say, "Well, there's nothing we can do because we don't have a noise ordinance." Well, the man next door says, "I didn't go to jail for 13 years for nothing. I can do what I want. I can say what I want, and I can, any hour of the night, because there's no noise ordinance." And when I tell you guys, "Any hour of the night," I mean, any hour of the night. The music rocks. No one should have to listen to the kind of music that comes out of that house. No one. And I have recording right here. I could turn on and show you, but your hair would all curl off. That's how bad it is. I have the recording from the first time I got arrested, when I was a trespasser. So we have a definite problem. He doesn't care. He'll go out there, he'll raise that music as loud as he possibly can. We have an elderly man, he must be 89, 90 years old, with his mental development, petrified of this whole group of these kids because they ride their ATVs on property that doesn't belong to them behind the house. It belongs to John Van Hook, who lives in Connecticut. Before I knew about this board meeting, I was desperate. So I went out, and I started a petition before this even came about to the public, that I knew of. Unfortunately, in sick this week, they didn't get to follow through on the rest of it. I've got over 250 signatures of people here in Macon County that say, "Hey, we need something." Now, as I told everybody that signed that petition, I am not expecting everybody to become nuns and priests. I do not expect you to go in your house at 7:00 and just sit there and do nothing. No. There has to be something between 11:00 at night to 7:00 in the morning to keep these people from doing these things. It's not fair. Will there always be that one exception that maybe a graduation party might go a little bit on board? Yes. Every night? No. This is every single night. I've got it on record. I've got the dates. I don't like this call. I don't believe I did that because that was not my court papers, not my honeymoon papers. And please help us. My husband walked into my bedroom a couple of weeks ago with tears running down his cheeks, and he said, "Call the manager." "What?" Because I can't take that one. And that was the day that I went because he had, he was also told he wasn't allowed to speak to us. But again, I could play this and you could tell he doesn't listen to anything. And he stopped me on the road and told me how sorry he was. Then he talked to the kids, and it wouldn't happen again that night, all night long, it went on again. And it continues to do it night after night. He might rest a day or two. The man doesn't sleep. He's always doing one in the east. I don't know why, but there's a reason. And I beg you guys to really seriously, seriously look at this and do something to help us because the police, they come out, they apologize, "Sorry, we can't do anything. There's no noise ordinance." There's got to be something to stop this. My, my, my husband's not sleeping. My daughter's not sleeping. They're in a bad mood. Guess who gets the blood from it? So I beg you guys, please, 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 please address this. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'd like to ask you a few questions.
Oh, I'm so sorry. See, I've never done this before.
Just a second. We're canceled.
Yeah, we're canceled. You were talking about it going on all night.
Oh.
What happens during the day?
Same thing.
Same thing, all day. So all day, all night?
Yeah, all day, all night.
And you said that they are riding these ATVs on property that is not owned by them?
No, not owned by them.
Why don't the property owners hose the land and petition the courts and charge these people for criminal trespass and sort of, because this is, this is where I see a noise ordinance, okay? I run a landscaping business. I run a landscaping business, and I run a chainsaw, blowers, lawn mowers, whatever. We try to be respectful to the people that we're working around, but we still have a job to do. And I see a noise ordinance restricting a lot of us that are working because where does it end? I understand what you're saying, and I, I'm really sorry for that. But I think the court system is in place for you to petition the courts for trespassing or any of that other stuff.
There's a trespassing thing right now.
I would hate for you to sell your home because of people like this. You know, and therein, if he, I mean, I just see restrictions on other people because of this person.
Did you read the law ordinance that Matt sent us that talked about exemption for agronomic activities?
And I agree with that.
Let me just tell you.
Ah, you're not.
In Highlands, they're trying to get stopped. Jake breaks in town, motorcycles in town, leaf blowers in town, chainsaws in town, and all this other stuff. That's what's going on in Highlands.
Just focus on what she was.
Well, I understand.
Okay.
With her problem.
Because actually, he owns a lawn mowing business where, which is not supposed to be run out of my neighborhood. And he's out there tuning up his, his engines at 6:00 in the morning because he's got to go mow a lawn. So that's part of the problem too. But like I said, every single day, this should not be the same thing. It just should not be where the music. No, I have a three-year-old, and I have a 12-year-old, and I have a 15-year-old. And I should not have to have these children listen to music that's this, that, all day long, constantly, doesn't stop. They play that music so loud that it literally shakes my house, and that's God's honest truth. It shakes my house. So this is what I'm referring to. It's just ridiculous.
I just have, is, are you in a, in a small neighborhood? Or do you have a lot of property around you?
No, we're all on half-acre land, and unfortunately, my house, my house is like this. And his house is like this. So when he has that bad door open on his porch with those speakers that are as tall as his roof, it's just, he, is there such thing, guys, as a nuisance law? Because he would fall into that, but I was told there's not a nuisance law.
We don't have a sheriff here tonight, but he had a meeting in Raleigh. He wants to attend, but he plans on meeting next month.
I might have something a little later to discuss, but we'll see. I've got something that we maybe can talk about here in a few minutes.
Okay. Okay. Please, help us, please. And it's, yes, there's nothing against the law business. You all need to make money.
I'm sorry that you're living what you're living.
Thank you, Donna.
Thank you.
Next is Mr. Adrian Jarris. So you say what she said, but I.
But I still have one question to this man. He wants a.
Sorry, honey.
You run a, a lawn business, right? Would you go out at night and do somebody's lawn at, say, 3:00 in the freaking morning?
He's it.
Would you do that?
I have more respect.
Well, he does that all the time. I don't know why he doesn't do it during the day like normal hours. Maybe it's too hot. I don't know. But even, even after hours from 5 till, say, 8 at night would even be within the margin. But when he goes after that till 3, 4, 5 o'clock in the morning, and I'm trying to get some sleep, I'm this close.
I understand.
Every night.
Every night.
Seven months of it, every night.
Honey, calm down.
Well.
Calm down, Case.
I understand. I mean, I'd like to say.
You know, those people, those people out there that, that would do away with a guy. I mean, there are people out there that would do that. I'm a Christian, so I can't do that. If I wasn't a Christian, I might be going to jail. But that's the way it is.
That's how bad it is. That's how bad it is.
Any questions?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody else who wants to speak?
My name is Bob here. I live out in Park Chapel.
Bob, how do you spell your last name?
K.I.R.
State I U R. Thank you, sir.
Okay. I have a neighbor too that I've been having a problem with often on for a couple of years, year and a half. He likes to play his music all hours of the day and night. I've heard talk here about, you know, having noise ordinances just at night, but you have to consider sometimes people actually do it in the day. Also, weekends, I like to, you know, relax and have my time and not have people, you know. But basically, for me, it's just a matter of, excuse me, of being going, or being able to go home, to sit around, to listen, to not have to wonder about the new music that's coming on. Sometimes it gets to 1, 2 in the morning. Not so much the volume. It's the Bay City buds in it, and it's just this boom, 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 boom. That just drives me crazy. As far as lawn mowers, I don't think, I don't think really most people would have problems with mowers and model airplanes. You know, there's a line between everybody active and what people are doing. I've heard a lot of people in North Carolina like to use decimal levels for noise ordinances. I've heard that's a problem with the courts. If it's thrown out all the time. That's what I've been told by local county commissioner here. I'm a former cop in Florida, and we had a simple rule. It was a hundred-thub rule. You could play your music, but if you were in a vehicle, a car, anywhere, if it was, you could hear it over 100 feet away, then it was too loud. First time, you got a warning. Second time, you got a notice from the court. Third time, you went to jail. That's how they did it for county Florida. It doesn't have to be 100-thub, but if you had something similar like that, I think that would be more, I think it would be more helpful to say, you know, have something like decimal levels. This particular neighbor, he, I had called the law enforcement, and they've come out several times, and had asked him to turn it down. And then it got to the point where law enforcement would not come out. They said they couldn't do anything. Last time they went out, he tried to fight them, and he got away with that. I don't know, I guess, if I say wrong fight properly. And he ordered them off, and then he considered, or continued to play his music loud. But he, you know, he, as I say, he just, well, after that, I should say, he, he, I guess figured out that I had called in, or he was just making a guess. And he tried to come from me, went down, was coming back from Georgia. I take my dog down, some other stuff. And he pulled out, he stopped on the road, and he said something. He had a loud truck, and I'm over here, there's some trees and, you know, some distance. So he ordered something, and the gist of it was, he called me an F and A mode, and drove on. I guess it's okay to do any sense of, which is fine, but he still played his music. He built a structure down there, and he's called someone that I know that he knows. I guess he told him that's his party porch, so, and he supposedly put a big string key in it. So I haven't had a problem yet with having people over and moving up the hill, so. But my issue, like with the sheriff's office, is, you know, they say you can do something on your property, and that's fine. But he lives across the street down the road. When what he does comes up the hill, across the street, comes into my house, and it's my issue. And I think people should be protected, so.
What kind of distance do you say you're up in now?
I've never been to his house, but probably quite close to 100 yards. But he, you know, he has his own business, so I believe, yeah, I believe he's practical enough unlike what I've heard with here. But I think he would be practical enough that if there was some sort of ordinance sending a bit into the wall that took away from him having to do his business, you know, he's gonna get mad at me, which is fine. But I think it would, I think it might, you know, influence him to turn things down. He's been better lately, but I've been through this before. He went like three, four, five months without playing it at all. And then he started it up, you know, just cranking it way up, and it's, I guess you could say he's not very good. I know boys come to it. But even if he's not playing it, I'm sitting in my house, you know, I'm complaining, you know, am I going to be able to do tonight, tonight, without having to hear that? I've been asleep, fallen asleep on the couch, woke up, you know, that thump, 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 and that's what, as I said, that's what drives me crazy, so. But I would really like to see some sort of noise ordinance pass out babies, be a little complicated. That could be something that, you know, it's pretty easy to determine who's playing music and disturbing others versus some sort of copyrighted business. Whether it's Jake breaks barking dogs, potentially, because Jake breaks, I'm going for hours on each time. And I could live for a short time, but I guess, I really, I wasn't sure what this was tonight. I didn't really come prepared for anything. Just kind of had it in here, but I don't know. I didn't know this is, you know, the form that you have.
Thank you. Anybody have questions?
Are both of these, are these people homeowners or do they rent?
Homeowners. In fact, when I moved in, he had talked about wanting to buy my property. In fact, when I moved in, he had talked about wanting to buy my property. I used to get along fine, and he did some work for me, but, and neighbor was on the side of it. I think that's one of the reasons why I turned it down a little bit. But the, the man is 89, and his wife is, you know, is not far behind him, so I think he's tempered a little bit, but I think there's other things to go on to get him, and crank it up again. But it's, you know, it would be, it would be reassuring if he had something, you know, I don't want to call anybody, I don't have it, but, you know, if necessary, you know, I used to have something called back on, that he could call me if I had to address this, and say, well, I can, I'm tired, I can help.
Any other questions? Old business. There is, I was at the commissioning a couple weeks ago, and I just presented with our, our opinion on the infrastructure study. To get my answer, so. So, new business, we've been asked to discuss noise ordinances. We hope to have the sheriff here this evening, however, he didn't want to send somebody to this place, and he's in Raleigh, so he's a shirt back.
Is the sheriff moving, calling, pretending to? He does, he is interested in coming to talk to us, explaining some of the reasons why sheriff's department, you know, that, that run out, from what I took away from the board meeting. And just to bring you up to speed, the last two or three commission meetings, when somebody talked publicly, public comment about noise ordinances, in both examples, basically following this sort of loud music playing.
There was a one, maybe there was an older couple, and they had all the sheriff's department over and over, and the neighbor would actually, you know, do you turn the music up to harass them, they call?
Yeah.
And the neighbor was really, really upset, and I think that, I mean, that, the commissioners responded a lot to what they had to say. I think that's one of the things that motivated them.
Another example that came out was a gentleman that worked during the day, I'm sorry, worked at night, so when he lived in the war, he takes, set speakers on the property lawn, turned the football hall, or something like that.
Did the speakers survive?
Somehow, they did.
That would be interesting.
I don't know. I don't know.
But that's, that's why we're here today, is commissioners open up and start, we look at some good issues.
A lot of hell, and I wanted to handle rentals for 40 years. The biggest complaints that I have that they can't do anything about, and that, that we need some sort of noise ordinance, is barking dogs, is number one. We've got one in our neighborhood who's been prisoned twice, 24 hours a day. They have shut up.
It's prisoned?
No. It's like...
Oh, okay.
She's done her by luck.
The second thing is with the music and loud music and stuff like that, but I think that's the number one. The second thing is something John's talking about, is people don't do not like the lawnmowers disturbing their Sunday afternoon, these quiet, when you get time to sit down, because lawnmowers make more than a lot of racket. And I think I have about three in my neighborhood that mows the grass every Sunday.
Can I ask you a question? I don't know if you have any, but as a, are you a landlord?
I'm a landlord, I have 15.
How, how do you deal, currently deal with noise issues as a landlord yourself, so that your revenue's not impacted at some point? How do you handle?
It's in my leases, that they cannot do this, and if they don't abide by it, and they're disturbing all the other people, my other landlords, men, folks, five, I take them into court, and they go somewhere else.
So you have to admit now?
I'll admit.
But that costs money? Costs you money?
It costs me money. But if I've got five rentals here, then I'm gonna lose because of this one other person, because they've got six days there to mow the grass. And you can't afford to lose five people over one. And of course, the, I don't remember the third one. But those have been my biggest challenges.
Okay. Now, I was, Mark West and John Underwood were unable to be here tonight.
That's what I'm handling.
They sent us some emails with some of their thoughts, just thought it was necessary to be shared with everybody, so we'd see everything open. So they should be here at the next meeting, and become part of the discussion.
You know, the samples you gave, and they aren't based on the decimals, boy. They were based on conceptual, on decibel orders. They were based on...
You're talking about the example, or, let me get into that, just to say, won't get this in the press, so that everybody's got a full disclosure, and I'll get my hands on it. Just take one detail. Uh, yes, it is. One thing we talked about, Donna, this is where you talked about earlier, nuisance laws in North Carolina.
Yes, sir.
Let me just do a quick web search and type in nuisance laws for North Carolina. This came out of North Carolina State University, and current, nuisance, the way to handle nuisance is two types, a public nuisance or a private nuisance. 90% of them fall under private nuisance. You know, it's between two private parties, and that falls under court law, which requires civil actions.
Which means what?
Basically, you have to sue them to, and then they will give an injunction, require it to stop, or they will put a restraining order on that activity. So with a little research, you can probably, I can figure out a way to get it into the court system.
That's not when the police told us.
Yeah.
They told us there wasn't no, no such thing.
Do a little, if you look, type in nuisance laws for North Carolina, and it'll pop right out.
Okay, that's why I'm fine, I said nuisance laws making carry. So this is a statewide thing. And yes, he is a wrencher, but he rents from his father-in-law, and because of his prison record, I truly believe his father-in-law, ex-father-in-law, is a threat.
And the ex-father-in-law lives at four.
Yeah. That's why he's standing there.
Well, I just want, that's what...
I just have to play one of my tapes, and you guys would die. I'm serious.
Donna, you ought to share that with the sheriff, and he's here this morning.
Oh, I already brought stuff over to him, and he kind of says, well, we have no nuisance law. Yes, excuse me, noise ordinance.
Okay, let's see. We had three ordinances that Matt sent out. We had one from Clay County, which has very recently been adopted, is that correct?
I don't know which it is, it's been very recent, it's on our website, yeah. The notice, if you compare the Clay County noise control ordinance, and then there's one that just says Chapter 9, 5, noise control, that's Haywood County, they're almost word for word identical. There's a few words that are changed for obvious reasons to tweak it to what they were looking for, but they basically deal with unreasonable, loud, or ruckus type noise. From what I've read, it exempts pretty much everything except neighborhood type issue at night. And we can, we can look through those and discuss those, and then the Henderson deal, or Henderson County. That one is noise ordinance, regulated the Clay County and the Haywood more specifically for certain issues. So, and the only real differences I found in Clay County and Haywood County is their definitions are a little different. And we can, we can start to go down that road. I'd be interested to hear what the sheriff's opinion is of the compact, or what it is.
Oh, yeah, I think if it, if it involves the sheriff's department, the office is lax, unfortunately, you need to get the tables. But they're basically, they're, they're above, they're above doing two different things. And I want to figure out, is it going to be a case, I think a case number one, he thinks he's made his best to, to take care of what people say is being involved.
The decibel meter thing, too, with the commissioning, or last couple weeks ago, there was a little discussion about ordinances and commissioners, I put in some thoughts. And Chester, general, since it's just kind of passing, the decibel thing's pretty hard to do, and I think it comes to court system, just sort of mentioned that part.
It seems like that's not the approach that the county's having. I think both ordinances have their benefits, but that's not having any control in the daytime, it seems to be a little relaxing. We're hearing about somebody putting a speaker on the porch intentionally, we've been in it all day. My daughter had been situated, her neighbors, after we asked them to not ride, if they were so fast through the property, would ride six hours a day, speeding up so that they made a lot more to come around, so that, so people do that.
Same problem.
Yep. Yeah. People do have reasonable problems in the daytime.
Like Paul said, maybe we should talk to some more, just in the town.
Now, that an old one, the neighbors, they just feel that it's so old down there, it's a topic to, to get.
Town Highlands recently bought one, too. John's not here tonight, but they had a problem with some of the restaurants in town.
John, do you know?
They, they had a little problem.
But they just restricted it, or changed it, or something.
I think they changed it, but I guess they have it.
We were, and they applied to, we were working on a pay system at the high school, and during the test, we had, we had, that continued with sound coming out for a period of time, and that, that happened to be on Saturday, violation, with a ton of, it's an awful lot.
Saturday in summer?
July.
John?
Sir?
Question about Lance Mower. This town, of course, what, what percentage of your activities go on outside of 7:00 and 4:00 to 5:00? As far as, far as mowing, weeding, racket, racket?
Well, I have restricted my guys to start at 8:00 in the morning, and we work 14-hour days. That, that is in perfect weather condition. However, we're running into a problem with, with working until 6:00 in the evening, because 5:00, people want to stop. People don't want it going on on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. They're here for the, they're in Highlands for the weekend, they don't want to hear this noise. However, they want the property taken care of. And if we run into rain condition, if we get rained out on Thursday, we have to work on Friday. If we get rained out on Friday, we have to work on Saturday. And a lot of the private clubs, Coliseum Club, all over, you don't work in there on weekends.
So it's, it's private?
Right. But out in the open community, out of respect for everyone, I have a neighbor right behind my shop, I will not let my guys come in before 8:00 in the morning. My back door is not to open before 8:00 in the morning. And we leave the big mowers on the truck, so we don't have to...
How much mowers do you have, do you own sheriffs and certain?
We don't. I mean, it's, I mean, unless it is, well, Sunday, no, we don't, we don't, we don't do that. But it is a, there's a lot of issues about all this maintenance equipment, and I look at, even with this, you know, farming and stuff like that, I mean, it's, if I live by one of your fields, and you ran a tractor 8:00 an hour a day, I think it was pretty rough, but at the same time, I have to be real with, with actually what's going on. But we still try to be very respectful to everybody we're working around.
So you're saying, you're saying, for the most part, you're able to, or able to save your guy?
Right. Just like today, the guys finish at 2:00 today, so we manage to get good weather all week, so 2:00 today, we're done, and they go home. He, he mentioned, he mentioned a 14-hour day. 10-hour days. Four to 10-hour days.
Four to 10-hour days.
Four to 10-hour days.
Eight to morning days.
Eight to six.
Oh, sorry, eight to six.
Is there any other word number seven? Those first one examples, anyone else here to talk about, or?
That was the third thing. I've got a guy that tunes up his race car, and he seems to be constantly running it up and down, and blowing it up there in the neighborhood.
At our place? It's the four-wheeler, it's the four-wheeler behind you.
Is that what it is?
About 11:00 at night, cranks it up, and heads down, kind of lap on there.
Now, this is usually during the day, but this is usually during, during like days, because I don't throw that at night.
Yeah, there's a fellow at night.
But, but he does it every weekend, he tunes that car, drives it out, tunes it, drives it out. And my dad used to win races, so I know what he's doing, and he tells me when it's running, and probably, what probably is it?
Well...
That's, that's a rare catch.
In our situation, where these people were running the four-wheeler up and down, I mean, literally six hours of time, and doing that kind of rest, my daughter, she finally moved out. We ran it to somebody, two bloody people. They did the same thing today, and they threw stones at their dogs, and one of the tenants went down to speak with the guy, he was threatened, killed. And like, he was the kind of a-hole who was destroyed in Madison County by moving there and interfering with the way people did things. And my daughter and the tenants had pets killed, and we could never prove that they did, but they, they were people, they were just mean people, and they liked their glass, and we had that kind of thing. And people shouldn't have to. We would call the sheriff's department, they'd have the same answer, you're here, there's not anything to do with that. People deserve some sort of...
It is getting dangerous, and it is getting, somebody's gonna get killed, we don't have at least something that the sheriff can follow through on and do something about.
I like that.
Well, that sounds... Kind of wait and see what the sheriff has to say. I think really we need to hear from the horses now, per se, and, you know, read the ordinances that Matt sent out, and maybe kind of pick up next month, and kind of see where we're at.
You have any more attacks, questions, or...
I think that, I like the way they set that up, you know, until people's tuning it over.
Yeah, I just make this out as, as for Henderson County from over, normally, you kind of, I'm saying, we would go to Henderson County, but I think it would be good to just notice out of people that think this is what's going on. Did you hear what you need to say? What do you need?
The, or the coverage of the ordinance, is that a question you have here?
To me, it needs to be more, more than nuisance ordinance, than law enforcement. I don't mind that. But it's one, right, but, you know, tomorrow, the crop is gone, field, and then that field's gonna light on for that crop. I don't think that's a good...
Well, even Henderson, it's in...
And I've never seen, I, I might heard anybody have an issue with agriculture, but I just, but I think that there does need to be some protection afforded to someone who is... is, who is doing something to hurtlessly harm someone. Mountain, a year back, folks bought seven acres. Sounds like maybe it could be more than one house place, but there's one house place on it. They started building it. The neighbor went down to the pawn shop, bought the biggest set of speakers that he could find, run them out down the property line, put a, you know, multi-disc player in the garage, volumes, CD volumes down there. And they were in all. It was day in. I think there needs to be some protection provided for that, or you have opportunity somebody different would, would do it.
That almost sounds like intentional harassment though. I wouldn't be surprised there's not some state law in place.
Well, that older couple, the county, the county commissioner, they were asking, I always said it wasn't intentional. If they call or if they call the Sheriff's Department, the noise was raised high.
Very good tears. Yeah. I think that you'll find both of these cases, these issues are not Joe Carson or, or him weeding, mowing tonight. It's, it's somebody who sets out to do something to cause an issue. And the, the dog thing, my personal opinion is, it's got to be.
We shall see.
For about a dog.
And Henderson County, they try to describe what makes a noise unreasonable loud. I think it's really good. And it includes in things like whether it's related to the normal operation of a business or other labor activity, whether the noise is subject to being controlled without unreasonable effort or expense to the creator there are. I mean, they try to distinguish what they mean by unreasonable.
I think there'd be something there, some provision for pollution, anyone else.
Yeah. Yeah.
This guy that's harassing us all the time, he'll, he'll get up there at like three o'clock in the morning, four o'clock in the morning, doesn't matter. And I don't know if he stays up all night or anything like that. But he'll take, he'll take a, a piece of wood or something and he'll bang on his truck to get the twelve dogs in the neighborhood barking. He'll do it on purpose. So, and, and there's no, there's no law to cover that. So, what do we have for recourse? We have no recourse here either.
I have not, I don't, I don't dispose today pretty much of a lot of lies of more than nuisance ordinance and such the noise ordinance to think about how we can.
Well, we need to be careful too, to stay focused on what we've been asked to do, which we can get closer to. If we feel that, that we need to have the conversation and it turns into more of a nuisance issue than a noise issue, we need to have a conversation with the commissioner before they walk on team.
But, I mean, all these examples have been noise, but they've been noise as a nuisance. So, it's habitual. Yeah. It's habitual. It's, it's, it's not the decibel of the noise, it's the way it's done. But it has mostly been noise.
It'd be neat if you could somehow combine them, work it out, you know, in a combination so that the police have something to, for their recourse to be able to stop it.
Is there anything in that package that addresses, does it address noise? Does it address industry types?
It's more of an industry type. It has noise, depending if it's more because of the activity.
Matt, based on that nuisance law for North Carolina, have you spoken to the county attorney just to see?
I've thought, and that's what I hope to get done in the next couple of weeks, is talk to him and see what his opinion on nuisance laws and the enforceability of nuisance laws.
And who would enforce it and how it's enforced.
I think right now it's basically one neighbor against the other, you know.
Right.
Would we want the attorney here with the sheriff? Would there be any benefit to that?
We could offer that to, up and down the manager.
See, I think that might be good to have both of them sitting here together, talking to us.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I've talked with the, I've talked with the county, are you talking about Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir.
I talked with one of the commissioners, it put me in touch with him. I talked with him, he was going to research it. And tell me what we're stood on there. He basically sent me a letter and basically all it said was, you don't have a noise ordinance. Sorry, can't help you. And, you know, you mentioned about going to court over this. I was told that too. I talked with the magistrate. I talked with Ashley Welch. I know she's running for district attorney. I'm not sure what her title is right now. And I've talked with others and I've been told, actually I talked with one attorney and he told me that his advice was for me to buy a case of beer, take it to my neighbor and apologize for making his life rough. I would call that by an attorney. And he said, that's the way we do things up here. It's a good old boy system. If you make me feel like you won, then he'll probably stop. And I said, well, that's not how I operate. So, and I don't think it'd work with him anyway. It would make it worse.
You know, I think we need to understand that nuisance laws are ours, so we're not trying to write the same thing or we need to have a clear path. So, I think we need to share.
Would it all, would it be helpful to you, Brett, if I gave you, or got you a copy of from May or June to present, of all the things that I tried to write down, everything that that happened so that you have an idea?
Absolutely.
What nuisance really is?
If you want a part of the record of the conversation, then we're happy to have whatever information you have.
Yeah, I do have one with me if I could get, if you can get a copy of it. I have a report too.
Just one of them?
Never realized that I didn't have to do anything like this, never.
So, next meeting's October sixteenth?
Can I just say one more thing?
October sixteenth, we will have our next monthly meeting, we'll be October the sixteenth at four o'clock.
And we'll be continuing this discussion?
Sixteen. He's going to want to get.
Oh, you wish, Mr. Jones. I think you want to. Yes, sir.
I just have one more thing. I talked about, you know, going, going through like civil courts and I live in that. And I was told that you would have to have an attorney, you can plan on spending minimum three, five thousand dollars in public abuse. I checked with a local attorney and I was told that no attorney in this county is going to touch it because everybody does business with the county, you know, conflict of interest. So, you'd have to outside of county and find someone. And that just seems like a bunch of nonsense. It shouldn't be something that's held, you know, that's controlled here within the county as far as having, doing something for the courts. Now, why should I have to pay money to have a piece of mine in my own house?
I don't have any money.
Well, that's the thing, I believe.
Yeah. And everyone knows, we just, we advise the commissioners what to do. So, whatever leaves this board goes to the commissioners for their approval, adoption, change, throw in the round file, whatever. Mr. Jones?
So, good.
Thank you, everybody.